We would like to remind everyone to please be sure that our cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the role call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Will you pray with me? Almighty God, we thank you for today. We thank you for the blessings of life. We thank you for your blessings on our city. God, we thank you for the freedom to assemble here today. And God, I pray your wisdom and knowledge for members of this council with the decisions they'll be making today. I pray that you'll continue to watch over the mayor and his administration. Lord, just help us all to focus on you and your will for our lives and our city. And we'll give you the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting that was held March the 15th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of March 11 through the 17th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclaimations, unfinished business. We have none today. This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition or in favor of a resolution on an abatement of nuisance on property located at 1111 Stillman Avenue in District 2. This is FNA NB LLC and Nikita Shepherd, subject to right of redemption of Barfield Investments being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? If you'll come to the podium and give your name and address, please.
Nikita Shepherd, 1111 Stillman Avenue. What am I supposed to say?
Okay, according to this public hearing, this is a nuisance. There's a nuisance, there's a... that the building department has filed on this property.
Just let the council know what you need.
What you want.
Yeah, so the property has been determined to be a public nuisance. And this hearing will be to determine if it gets... if a vote is passed to be able... if a motion is passed to abate the nuisance. And so if you have any objective plans to bring the property up to code, now's the time to talk to the council about that and ask for whatever time you need to get that done.
Okay, so we started, we have replaced the doors, we have replaced the windows, and we have started replacing the siding on the house. We had to find shelter for ourselves after our house burned up, so that has taken us some time, but we're settled now. And now we're in a position now to refurbish that home. So we are, in the last two weeks, we have been restoring our outside first and then because I spoke with the building official, I think, about a month ago.
That guy right there?
Yeah, and he told me if I got it up to code outside, because we thought we needed a building permit to work on it, period. But he told me as long as we get it up to code outside, they'll give us a permit for the inside, so.
So he's gonna come up behind you and kind of let the council know what his recommendations are. And I think he'll incorporate some of the conversations you've had with him. But how do you... this is your opportunity to convince this council that, hey, you know, and the community, because these cases come to us in large part because people in the community are complaining.
Got you. Which is understandable, I guess. But like I said, we had, ooh, a rough year and we were forced to move out of our home due to house fire. And it's not hard, you know, restoring and then happening to... because we were going to abandon the property and abate it, but we seen that the structure is not as bad as we thought it was initially in the beginning. And so now we see future potential to repair the house and restore the house for someone else a home, basically, in their neighborhood.
Okay.
Ms. Shepherd, did I understand you to say that your current living house had a fire?
The one we're talking about now.
Oh, this one had a fire?
Yes, sir.
And what are your plans, if you can get it fixed up? What are your plans for that house?
If we can get it fixed up, we have a relative that's gonna live in it for probably about a year, and then we may start renting the property in the future.
All right, yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, we don't, you know, again, the city, we don't want to tear it down.
No, I don't want you to tear my house down. That's my first... that is my husband and I's first home we've ever owned. And it's valuable to us. And no, we don't want you to tear our home down.
So in terms of your plan, as far as, I mean, because he can only give... we can only give so much time.
Okay.
And so it always helps when you have a plan in place, when you've got contractors lined up and you can show...
Right, okay. So we have, so currently, we have our... we have a crew that is working our outside structure. We have a licensed electrician and plumber. When we get to those parts, the plumbing is great, but of course, the electrical... we have a electrician who did our electrical work at our current residence, who is on standby to work with us on getting our electrical part back up to code. And the plumbing is good. And we have contractors who are gonna come in and do the inside, the flooring, the walling, stuff like that. So we do have our crew. We had, and that's another thing, we had to get, have a little time to gather, you know, because we ran into some issues on another property with people and we had to make sure we had somebody that was reliable and affordable to assist us with getting our home back to where it is. Where it needs to be.
So how much time are you asking of the council?
Um, about two months, a month.
What's the max time?
What is the max amount of time I can get?
You have to be showing, for us to get beyond a month or two, you have to be showing some considerable progress. Typically, what happens?
I have pictures of where we started, as far as the doors and the windows being replaced, but our crew is out there every day doing something. Yeah, most definitely.
Have you shared your plans? This is my last question. Have you shared your plan as far as bringing the house up to code? Have you shared that with Mr. Harbison?
I haven't spoken with him anymore since our last phone conversation.
Because I always remember, this is for this case and future. None of these guys up here are experts on housing rehab, all right? But he is.
Got you.
And so it's probably more important that he know what's going on, because he's gonna make a recommendation to us.
Okay.
All right.
Ma'am, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
And this doesn't have typically, just so you know, we... the council tends to default towards the council member that who's over this area of the community, and this is not in my district, so I'm just asking a personal question for you, because I say this a lot. Do you guys have an estimate of how much it's gonna cost to repair this?
No, we don't have one.
Ten thousand? Okay. I just worry sometimes with residents putting good money after bad, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
It seems to me that that's a very, very extensive repair job. And I worry that y'all are gonna put more money into it than what the house will be worth once it's finished. You know, sometimes it doesn't make sense to save it.
So like, that's why, that's what I was saying in the beginning, like, my home burned up and it looked like, okay, it's nothing, it's destroyed.
Yeah.
And so over time, as we go and visit the property and look more and more, and then we have people to come and give us a second opinion as well, and we notice our foundation is perfect. The most damage to the house was mainly smoke, and the most part that was burnt, like, was like the walling in the living room and the kitchen, and of course, the wiring. But that was really the only... the foundation is great, so... and I think we're only gonna have to replace maybe one beam, but that's it. There is like...
I hear you. And like Councilman Williams said, none of us are professional home builders.
Yeah, yeah, got you.
So I just, when I look at it on paper, when I look at pictures, I think, man, that's a big job.
Yeah, and that's what I thought when I finally just settled in and looked at it, like, my home is gone, you know? And then we looked at it again months later and I could see clearly, and now I can see the vision, okay, it can be refurbished without being expensive, yeah.
I just don't want y'all to put a bunch of money into it if you can't get it back.
Oh, yeah, trust me, if it was more money, we would've let it go.
Sure.
But, uh-uh, I paid the property taxes for a reason.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
All right.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there one, anyone to speak in favor? You may have a seat there.
Madam President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. This house apparently burned over a year ago, because in a couple of weeks, it'll be a year since we filed this case in April 2021. There have been some improvements to the outside, and I'm not opposed to giving 30 days additional time. And our conversation sounds like we were focusing on the outside of the house. If I can get that sealed up and completed in the next 30 days, then I'll work with them on the interior. We're gonna be involved with issuing permits and inspections anyway, so I'll make it easy on this body and just suggest we table it for 30 days. Thank you.
Yeah.
So what is the pleasure of the council?
Madam President, I make a motion that we table this for 30 days.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on an abatement of nuisance on property located at 636 Hill Yavne New in District 3. Sheila Duckett via estate of Roosevelt Holiday being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone to speak in favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in December of 2020. There've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
All right. What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
For the resolution on 331 Cornell Drive, the nuisance has already been abated by the owner. Our next items are items 12 through 14 are public hearings for resolution assessing nuisance abatement for the demolition work that has already been performed. I'm gonna call out the information for all three of these, and anyone who wishes to speak may come forward. This resolution, the first resolution is a nuisance abatement lien at 203 Carolin Lane in District 2, State of Alabama, possible redemption right of FNA NP LLC and Lenny D. Smiley and Eugene Smiley and BBTV Investments LLC in the amount of $3,020. The next abatement lien is 314 Roseland Drive in District 2, State of Alabama, Jackie McCormick and wife Deborah McCormick, $1,820. Our next and last abatement lien, nuisance lien, is 19W Wilkinson Avenue in District 7, the estate of John L. McCoy, Amy McCoy, Tina McCoy, Michael John McCoy, Sharon Marie Vals, Ron McCoy, Roger McCoy, Dorothy Powell, and any known heirs of Amy McCoy, State of Alabama, and is $3,395. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to these resolutions? Is there anyone speaking in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt all three resolutions.
So moved.
Agreed.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all three resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt for all three resolutions.
Our final public hearing is a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license, Quikity Split Mini Mark LLC doing business as Quikity Mark... Mini Mark Market located at 1401 East Broad Street in District 2 has applied for a retail beer and liquor table wine license off premises only. Police chiefs have recommended now. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? So you are already at the podium. Will you give your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Laurent Kinslow. I'm here representing Quikity Split.
You're gonna speak in favor?
You're gonna speak in favor?
Yeah, I'm speaking in favor.
Yeah, speak in favor.
I feel like the community really needs the store that I'm bringing back to life, I feel. You know, it's got a real bad name for the store. I put some money into the store and the surveillance is very up to par. I've put a lot of light around the building. I've talked with numerous police officers that come through, and I asked them for their help with keeping the loitering down and all that with them. So I feel like, I feel like it's gonna work, it's gonna do good. It's gonna be a drive-through. I'm trying to have it 24/7. You know, I got a drive-through window. And I'm just asking that you guys help me open it up, let me open it up.
Question, you said drive-through, is it total drive-through or just in addition there's a drive-through?
You can drive-through, but in, at nighttime, I'm gonna have it to where you gotta drive-through. It's the only thing that's gonna be available is the drive-through at night.
Okay. When you say there's gonna be a drive-through, does that include alcohol beverages?
Uh, far as the beer being sold out of?
Yeah.
Yes.
Can you do that in Alabama?
I mean, if...
No, I'm just asking, is it... I know there's certain restrictions with how alcohol can be sold. I'm just, I'm not challenging you, man, just check into your business model, because I'm not sure that ABC will allow you to buy alcohol through the drive-through.
Well, they do it in, I don't know about Alabama, but like, well, I'm from Los Angeles, so in L.A., up north, it's just...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, check it out. I've been in the alcohol business for a while. I'm pretty sure you can't do that. So just double-check on that before you put any more money into that model, is all I'm saying. They may not let you sell it through... the state ABC board may prohibit you from selling it through a drive-through window. There are some restrictions there. Like, they won't let them have the drive-through daiquiri places and stuff like that, like you can have in Louisiana.
Yeah, so you know, it's be open containers, though, you know, you can write in.
Well, technically, they're not, because that little piece of plastic on top of the straw, or they'll put a tape over the top to make it a closed container. I'm just telling you, man, circle back with ABC and make sure, before you get too far down that road.
Okay.
Listen, I have been a big proponent of shedding that place down over there, because drug activity was no secret.
True.
It was all day long, anytime. Wasn't no gas. I don't think gas ever been sold, and that's not my district, that's Councilman Williams' district, but as I said before, I'm the one pass by there every day. And so, you know, that's been, that's been my concern, and I was just shocked when I saw lights up there, because I thought, we didn't get, we didn't, the council, you all didn't work fast enough to tear the building down. That way, we couldn't have put nothing else over there. But, um...
Will you be, do you plan to sell gas?
Sir?
Do you plan to sell gasoline?
I have my number with Chevron right now. I got another gas station in Atala, Shell, I forgot the guy's name. He's helping me out with getting the gas over there as well. So I'm, I plan on having gas there.
Okay. Well, I mean, I don't think it's, I don't think it's any secret. I mean, there've been some concerns about that one and the one on the other end of East Broad and the loitering and what that, what that brings to the community, so...
Well, when you say that, you know, I feel like I'm a... I get a lot of respect. You know, my name carries a little weight around the neighborhood, you know? I don't feel like I'm gonna have that problem, you know, when it comes to loitering. I just can't see me have... And I feel like the reason why it goes on is because either the owner or the workers are allowing it, you know, because I can't just see somebody just standing there, sitting in front of my building without me saying nothing, you know, and they not move, so...
And you did say you have candles up, right?
Yes, sir. I put a, it's probably about a $2,000 system up there, so that's pretty good money for a surveillance system.
So you've already, you've talked to police officers that come through there?
Yes, ma'am.
Like I told you on the phone, I'm willing to give you a chance, but if we have problems like we did before, you know, we'll...
I respect whatever comes after that.
Yeah, well, I said I'd be standing in line, I'd be the first one in line to complain,
you know? If, whenever we shut down Victory, I want the nuisance so we can tear it down. Anything else? Anybody else?
I don't have anything.
You know, I don't know, this, we got your State of Alabama Alcohol Beverage Control Board, what they did to criminal investigation, and this took place back in 1990, so I'm all for giving people a second chance, you know? 1990 is a long time ago. People have a right to change, and people change all the time, so that's not a problem for me. And you know, and that's a lot, Sam, because I was a police back then.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, sir. Thank you. So what is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We have one no. Motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a resolution authorizing project scope revisions related to Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs for recreational trail program grant. The original project involved installation of steps with landing to connect two existing trails and a bridge across Cascade Creek. The scope revision deletes installation of the bridge, because all parties involved have determined that a different location would serve the area better, which would require more extensive planning and design. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Agreed.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a resolution authorizing permanent easement for right-of-way AT&amp;T. This is for installation of fiber optic utility line in the block between Broad and Chestnut Street and 4th and 5th Street. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Department reports, chief, anything new happening in the city?
No, ma'am, nothing, nothing worth talking about today.
All right. Captain Jackson, I know there's a lot happening in the city, so I won't call on you.
We've got enough time.
Absolutely. Remarks by the council, Councilman Williams.
I don't have anything, Madam President.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes, Madam President, we had another killing in the city, so I'm just asked us to continue to pray. And, but we got to put boots on the ground, we just can't pray, because faith without works is dead. So we got to talk to these young people. We got, we got to continue, we just can't give up. And it's just not the black community, it's happening in all these communities. So we got to continue to try to mentor these kids, and we gotta figure out something, because we can't continue to let the crime go up the way it's going up here in Gaston. We got to do something, and we're 20 officers short, so they can't patrol like they should, because they're running from call to call. So we got, we gotta do something. We can't keep doing the same thing, expecting a different result. So, thank you.
I've been trying to get you to put back your uniform on.
Yes, ma'am.
Maybe we should have a police job there.
We, the captain and I was out there talking about that. So we competing with, it's not that many people that really want to go in the law enforcement. So the ones that's, it's a calling, it's just not a job like these regular jobs, same with the fire department. It's a calling, so we are trying to attract the ones that want to do it.
Right.
And it's not that many. So you know what we gotta do? We gotta entice them somehow, you know? I'm gonna leave it at that, because it's gonna take a little more money.
Councilman Cannon?
I don't have anything.
Councilman Reed?
Yeah, I was just sitting here thinking about it. I wish I knew what the answer was, Thomas, I really do. Captain Jackson and I were talking about this summer. What in the world are you gonna do? Summer enrichment programs are going, and it seems to me like we ought to be able to get together and work out something for this summer. And y'all know better than me, because I don't know. If I put a uniform back on, it'd take about 30 seconds, but since you worked your years, then you know more about it than I do. So anyway, appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson?
I don't have anything, ma'am.
Councilman Back?
Thank you, Madam President. Just in relation to the Adeka Grant for the Nakalula Falls and the steps, I noticed, I think either this past weekend or weekend before, the Friends of the Falls had a big cleanup at Nakalula Falls. So once again, just thank you and kudos to that group, just countless bags of trash and things picked up, and I think they're having another one in April, I think I saw. So, you know, quite frankly, we couldn't have Nakalula Falls at the level that it operates without the Friends of the Falls. It's a great group of local volunteers that are constantly putting not only their time and effort, but also their money. So thank you to that group for what you do for Nakalula Falls. Spring's here, Sunday, first day of spring, so pretty soon, all the flowers will be blooming up there, it's gonna be really pretty at Nakalula Falls, and it's due in large part to the group Friends of the Falls. So just wanted to give them a, give them a public thank you. That's all I have, Madam President.
And as I announced last week, and I probably... And as I announced last week, and I probably will announce again, we have free training for employees. This is put on by AT&amp;N and the IDA through the City of Gaston, they're offering classes for free in April for manufacturing companies in Gaston and Edward County, and companies can enroll up to six employees. Is this gonna take place April, well, there are several classes, and they're different times, but start at April the fifth, fifteenth, eleventh, twentieth, and the twenty-second, and also the twenty-sixth. So if there's anyone, any companies who have employees that are interested in attending this, this is available. If there's nothing else, I call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.